Special meeting. For order, it is June 4th, 2025, sitting in the City Hall back conference room. And councilors, our next order of business is to ask you to consider amending the agenda. It was sent out with citizen comments listed. We don't do citizen comments on special meetings, so we need to amend the agenda.
Remove to amend the agenda to remove item three, citizen comments.
Second. Move by councillor Shorter, take my councillor right to remove agenda item under room number three, citizen comments for discussion. Bring on those in favor, please signify by standing aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Let's click for all key, would you call the vote?
President Kleber?
Aye.
Councillor Forsman?
Aye.
Councillor Klein?
Aye.
Councillor Wright?
Aye.
Councillor Spiegelmar?
Aye.
Councillor? Aye.
Thank you, council. Next item is room number four, active agenda. Please note that identifying an item as an action item does not require the city council to vote on that item. Item A, American Federation of State County Municipal Employees, paths made of eleven twenty-four negotiations considering whether to proceed with the termination of collective labor agreement at the end of its current term on September 30th.
Fledge of allegiance.
Fledge of allegiance.
Item two.
You're right. Our next order of business is the pledge of allegiance. I stand corrected, so please stand and join us for the second pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Aye.
Aye.
Fledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, councillor Wright. Now we'll move on to room number three, citizen comments. Pardon me, room number four, which is now our new room number three, but active agenda. Please note that identifying an item as an action item does not require the city council to vote on that item. Item A, American Federation of State County Municipal Employees, paths made of eleven twenty-four negotiations considering whether to proceed with the termination of the collective labor agreement at the end of its current term on September 30th, 2025, or continue with negotiations. This is an action item, and with that, I will open the floor for discussion. Councillor Spiegelmar?
I have a question, I guess probably three of them if I get asked of whoever the union representative is there.
Okay.
The first one I was wondering is, was the, the union was aware of the deadline, the May 31st deadline?
Uh, yes.
And in any time when I seen here that of the fifty-four days from the April 7th, when the council agreed to negotiate, there was fifty-four days, there was seven meetings, I think, that's the ones I watched online. Within that, did the, when you were setting up the meetings, did the city ever refuse or cancel any meetings that were proposed by the union?
Nothing I'm aware of.
And the city, who are city representatives, the, there were negotiators, did they, I mean, I'm trying to come out with why that it was delayed and it took so long, but I'm wondering if this, was the city ever, did they come to the meetings unprepared, or?
Well, to go back to the, the start and end dates, our arbitrary start date is on or around April 1st. Our end day is on or around the end of, of, May, May 31st. In my experience of twelve years, we've never been done on the 31st. We've never started on the 31st. It always shot for that, that timeframe. And usually within a six week period, we get that accomplished. As far as meetings go, I think both sides knew we had a short amount of time, we were going to double down, have multiple meetings per week, and that, that has happened.
So I guess with the fifty-four days, there was only seven meetings?
That would be so.
Thank you. Are there council comments or questions? Councillor Spiegelmar?
Um, this one's for, and I guess for the city, who would be able to answer the question best about negotiating?
Probably Director Providence, right, would be the best. If I just have the question, then I'll give it my best.
So I'm curious of the, the timeline of the negotiation, because it typically, I mean, is fifty-four days short, is it long, what's a normal negotiation period?
Well, I mean, to be fair, it could be short or long, you know, depending on the negotiations, you know, what edition you're negotiating, but I guess by reference, you know, statute for the I have definitely have thirty days to make negotiations. And, you know, I would say that both sides work faithfully and, and positive way to try to, you know, address the issues that we were debating, so. Yeah, I can ask Director Providence for, you know, of course, if I have to, to give more information. No. That's the interest of things.
Councillor Forsman?
I think, I'm trying, typical unions that I've seen, they bring some numbers, some stats from other, like, city populations, and from the recordings, I wasn't really seeing that from your union rep, bring the kind of numbers as far as pay raises should be and suggestions. It was a lot of, we're supposed to do, but if you have a union, the union should be putting in that recommendation, and we had a couple of the items on there too that needed some language cleared up, and there was a confusion between the city, the way they're reading it, the way we understand it, the way the union understands it. My biggest concern is why we weren't addressing those issues when we were having these meetings.
Well, so if you're doing comparisons, those were brought up at a few meetings. Comparisons are usually used for salaries or salary adjustments. To be honest with you, our, our goal in this negotiation, salary adjustments weren't really our biggest goal. Three years ago, they were, and the city and the union came to, the city came up with a new pay structure, we accepted as a union, we're on that pay structure today. We felt that, that wasn't, that wasn't our main priority this time around. That discussion certainly came up, it always does, there's nobody in this room who doesn't want to be private fighting to make a little more money, private sector, private sector, we're all, we all go to work together. As far as salary or salary adjustment goes, our experience in the, in the negotiations was the city presented a salary structure that the union accepted and said, we are okay with this. It was a two percent cost of living raise plus a one percent salary increase, across the board. And we said, okay, we're, we're okay with that, that was presented to us. So from our, from that viewpoint, as a union negotiating, our salary adjustment or our salary request was satisfied. That was not the main goal of our getting together and negotiating. Back to councillor Stickelmeier, when you talk about timeframes and the amount of meetings we had, the city worked, they worked with us to come up with a schedule for meetings. We did not set that schedule, the city does. They tell us when the meetings are, and we, we go, which is fine, I mean, they dictate the bees, and that's okay. So as far as fast or slow, I've seen slower, I've seen faster. As far as comparing to other towns and other cities, again, that was hashed out three years ago, it was hashed out during COVID. Nikki can speak to that, she was very much involved with that. We, we, we knew that going into the last negotiations, that was solved, settled, but it was settled. So we didn't come in guns blazing, you know, trying to get a big salary adjustment, the end, the city made a proposal, we said, okay, that sounds good. Our goal was to maintain our contract. I've said it from the first time I met you people, our goal is to always try to maintain the benefits and not to get those benefits taken away. You know, I'd like a negotiation, I think everybody would, from the city side, from our side, walk in, here's what we like, here's what we like, here's what we like, okay, here 's what we compromise on, here's what we can't compromise on, and you're done in three meetings. It can happen, it does happen. The challenge comes with trying to rewrite the contract every three years. It was good enough three years ago, but now we want to change it. Okay, and then why do you want to change it? And it always seems to fall on the shoulders of the employee. Whether it's saving money, I mean, it's always about saving money, obviously, but it's always, it always seems to be at the expense, as our view, at the expense of the employee. So salary adjustment was important, again, we all, we go in, hey, we'd like to make more money, city proposed, we said, okay, that's great, the rest of the contract, we would just, and we, we said it to you, you guys could look it over, it, it looks redlined and it looks like there's a lot of conflict there, but really, we're just looking to maintain our contract.
Councillor Oldsmobile? Brian, if I could respond to one thing, because we do have a member of the press here somewhere, I don't see her, but I think she's back here somewhere. The comment about setting the meetings up, I would have to disagree with that comment. I don't think the city set the meetings up, we sat down early on, as you recall, and we compared calendars, and we went through the weeks and said, how does this day look? How does this day look? How does this time look? So that was put together by both sides, we didn't dictate when the meetings were going to be. But I would have to disagree, I would have to disagree with that.
And if that's the case, then I apologize, I misspoke, I, I was not part of that discussion for, I think I was out of town on vacation, I don't know. There was some discussion about people, because of the work ground vacations and people being off and people being out of town, no different than the negotiating team for the city. The meetings are held Monday, between Monday and Friday, during work hours, although a lot of people on this side of the room who work shift work, and we aren't always in town on a Tuesday, or we aren't always in town. I missed the first meeting, I was out of town, I was gone. I, I let Nikki know that, go ahead and proceed, let's get started, let's get rolling, we know we're in a timeframe. I was able to join the second meeting on. It's a reality we have to face, there's, there's four people from our side on the negotiating, sometimes we, we have people. I was not aware of the first meeting, the first conversation, and sitting down to a schedule, but I do know that every week we'd sit down, and we would receive in our email, here's the schedule for this weekend. Time was set, date was set.
Councillor Spiegelmar?
Thank you, mayor.
Um, I guess another question for the union, um, I guess in my point, you know, extending it, we're starting in the month of June, we're going to start our, a lot of our budget talks, and if the negotiations were extended, it can't go on forever because we need to finalize all of our numbers, so if the union, if it was extended, what would be the proposed new final date? Because it can't be open ended.
No, we would never ask it to be open, that is certainly not our goal, our goal is to secure a contract, move on, go back to it, that's, that's our goal from day one.
So if I was to vote to extend it, what would be the date I'm voting for?
Um, you know, there's, there's two players in the ring, so we can give you an estimate, we can give you an estimate.
I want to hear it.
Again, you know what our goal is, our goal is, is have our contract, our, our proposed contract. I would like to think we could take care of it in the next couple meetings, but there's a lot of opposition, but what we have proposed, and I don't, I don't know if that's possible, so no. Wouldn't be the first time that there've been any of that, I think that's happened before, but we've always managed to work through it. So, again, you guys holding your hand, what we have proposed, mostly is just maintaining the contract and accepting the city's offer for salary.
Councillor Wright?
Yeah, I just wanted to run some clarifications by, because I've been going through the, the personnel policy, and in the, in the overtime section, but this is not union, this is its own, for all employees, so if this, if, if we didn't come to an agreement with the union and we followed the personnel policy, this, this would be what we follow, is my understanding. And I see in the, on page sixty-seven in the PDF, but page sixty-five in the document itself, there's a paragraph that says authorized overtime for work performed on recognized holidays shall be compensated for at the rate of twice the employee's regular hourly rate for the standard workday, except for those employees who are regularly scheduled to work on holidays. And then it has a little bit more, for example, employees. So, I mean, that doesn't seem like it would be much of a change if we just follow the personnel policy, am I understanding that right, that, am I reading that correctly?
No, councillor, I'm going to ask Director Providence, because there might be some nuances there that I'm not as well first, so let's ask Director Providence, because this, this has been an item that the council, when you voted to vorten a directive to, you set some sideboards on that, I thought that was going to be done, and, you know, I think it's fair to say that's an item that has been brought up since that time, but Director Providence can probably pull a little bit more flesh on the bones with this.
Yeah, the personnel policy, what it's referring to, is your holiday pay and your straight time pay, give you two times your, your hourly rate.
Oh, so this is. So, and, and I apologize, I just want to understand this, so it says, holidays shall be compensated for at the rate of twice the employee's regular hourly rate for the standard workday, except for those employees who are regularly scheduled to work on the holiday. So does the regularly scheduled mean they don't have the pay for the holiday, they just get paid regular?
I, I don't, I don't have it in front of me to like read exactly the scenario versus like theirs.
Yeah, I, I was just trying to understand the nuance, because if, if we shift over to the personnel policy.
I think the idea that, at least we received from council, was that you would like it to be more in line with other employee groups?
Right.
Where if they were to work that day, you know, they're getting their standard workday, and then they're getting a holiday, their standard. Some people like police and fire might receive that in one month some, other people might receive it as a holiday, plus their standard, or however many hours they work that day, or somebody might come in on that holiday as a call out and get time and a half for that time, but they'd also get their holiday standard.
Okay, so, okay, so maybe?
But I think at least from the negotiating team, we were trying to keep it very simplistic, to say you have your holiday pay, your base pay, your call out pay, doesn't matter, you know, what day of the week it is, or whether it's a holiday or not, if you're working, you're getting your, your hours worth, or if it's call out, you're getting call out, and then you're getting your holiday pay for that day.
Okay.
So it could be that you're, you're earning your standard workday plus your holiday, or it could be that you're getting your holiday pay and time and a half on a call out.
Because you weren't standard.
Because you weren't, you, yeah, you weren't scheduled, you were scheduled in the, in the sense that you were on standby time, but you weren't scheduled for a specific this time to this time.
Gotcha, okay, okay, I just wanted to clarify that, because I, I understand, because the default falls back to the personnel.
And if I could just clarify, you know, the question as far as the, the last offer, you know, the negotiating team's understanding was from the union, that it was two and a half percent, and then one percent market adjustment for all three years. On the city's side, we proposed two pay scales, one pay scale was with a two and a half percent COLA and a one percent market adjustment, and then a one and a half, or one to two and a half CPI for the next two years, or a COLA, and we would take some positions such as custodian and, and park labor are the lowest on the pay scale, move them up a grade, that we would take traffic and streets and move them up a grade, and that we would take the electrician position and move it up a grade. So everybody would get the COLA, but some of those positions would be modified on the, on the, the pay scale to be moved upgrades for a higher compensation. So those, those were the two offers from the city. And we didn't get response from that other than the two and a half percent COLA plus a one percent market adjustment for all three years. That was our last receipt from the union. I'm higher up here.
Councillor Forsman?
Um, the grievance on their contract versus not having, following this grievance the way, is, who would be the final say when we keep the grievance as, as, yeah, as the contract states? Because it says the mayor, getting rid of it, the mayor would have final say, but that's not currently, not as written.
So how we proposed it was that the mayor would be the final piece of the grievance, as is the, the personnel policy, that's what it is, as the mayor makes the final decision. As far as the contract goes, it would go to the mayor, if there was disagreement, it would go to mediation, and then it would go to arbitration, and then arbitration is binding on the city.
The mayor does or doesn't make the?
He does not make the final decision in the current contract. The next step would be mediation, and then arbitration, and arbitration would be binding.
Um, well, just as a, my opinion, I, I don't, this isn't a deal breaker for me personally, I'm keeping that in there for them to have as a process that is, may, I don't know if it makes them feel comfortable, but a process that they feel is best represents them, to me, that, that part doesn't bother me. The overtime work definitely was a lot of confusion, it seems like between what the city thinks that means for language wise and what the union thinks. That was the part that I would have liked to see in your, and I don't know, does your union, what is your union reps like, if you're, it's probably not union rep, but.
Stewart, trying to think, Stewart?
Is that her name?
Uh, counsel.
Laura, that's what I knew it was. Does she not typically address language conflicts and writing up a contract if there's some differences of opinion on a, on language and how that contract is written?
Yeah, she does, she doesn't necessarily get into the nuances of, we're not the only city she represents by any means, but into the nuances of the personnel policy, she'll reference that in conjunction with or in, in relation to the, to the union contract. So, her guiding principle is a union contract, you know, what can we change, what can we not change, is this language right? Usually by the time we get a copy of it, the negotiating team from the city has cleaned up language in certain areas, most of it's pretty mundane stuff, just things that were overlooked in previous contracts. But, when, yeah, when she represents us, she takes our contract, and this is what we're, this is our negotiating venture. It's, 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 it's always, any contract is always different from a personnel policy. Personnel policy is a liability, policy of each city, and a guideline of general overview policies of the state. The contract is, the contract of the employee that the city has obtained, has agreed to give it. It works for the city, and it works for the employee behind negotiating. We don't walk in and expect to get everything, and the city usually doesn't go into negotiations thinking, well, they're going to get everything. It's common, but we all try to find common, that you can, that was for forty years. Did that kind of answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. Can I ask a question to Nikki again? Just to raise you to, to be honest thought. What is, are other unions typically, do they usually have a, their own lawyer that deals with language conflicts, legal language conflicts in their contract, or do we as the city handle that party?
Well, so like the police have a, a union rep that comes in, and that individual is seeking the best interest of the union, so they may provide language, they may provide statistics, they might provide comparisons to other entities in an effort to, you know, support their union in the best contract that they can. The city may have some language change that doesn't, isn't clear to us, or needs a little bit more discussion to understand, so we may offer clarifying information for them to consider. to consider and for us to consider theirs, ultimately coming to a conclusion where we both understand the concept of the language. By our same thing, they don't usually have a union rep from IAF specifically, but one of their own members that is an IFF negotiator. And again, they usually come up with, you know, redlined language, potential pay comparisons, you know, something like that for us to consider.
So with the way that I was understanding these three, four items that the Council kinda said no go, we don't wanna continue that, it seems like there's conflicting understanding of it. Like the way I'm understanding it to the way that I think that you guys are saying it, there is conflict there. So with having, obviously, this language not being clear, is there a reason we, as the city haven't wrote, okay, let's make sure it's clear so that we're all understanding and not thinking? So for example, the mention of if you, you're working, you're on call, and you get called, and you get your automatic two hours, and then you get called, you go home, you're done with your thing, you get called again twenty minutes later. My understanding is you get an additional two hours on top, making it a total of four hours.
That's how some have submitted this time. But the way, now correct me if I'm wrong, but the way, that is not the way you and I had talked about that.
So currently, there are groups that do it that way. Buzz, excuse me.
I want to go forward.
Chris is on call, he's on call.
Yeah, I'm on call, Ryan missed the first meeting. Yes, currently, the way we've always did it at the water department, the way we're told, is get called out, you get your two hours. Anything within that two hours, you respond again, that's still within that two hours. Then if I'm out there an additional hour, then I put on that additional hour, or put out another callout onto that. So basically, I can get called three times in the night for something, and between that two hours, I only get two hours, that's all I get.
Okay, so if you, so let me make sure I understand. So if you're called out, and the job took you three hours, then you get your two hours because you went over that extended?
Two hours plus an hour. It's just you put in three.
Which is the three hours, okay.
So we were asking for clarification to put that into the contract so that it would be followed by all the groups, because it wasn't, it didn't otherwise say that.
And I'm okay with that, with keeping that. There's confusion between, the Council is understanding it totally differently.
We were fine with that.
So I think we need to change the language. If we're gonna continue a negotiation, we need to get language clear, concise, everybody knows how to follow it, and that's my problem currently where we're at. I don't know how the rest of the Council feels.
Can I also say that, I mean, I don't know what you were provided, but the city does have a redline version that we did provide the union, which does clarify holiday pay, overtime pay, regular hours work, if you're working on a holiday, we provided them language for them to consider. So, I mean, we feel like we provided information that would otherwise clarify those specific circumstances and make it as easy as possible for everybody to understand, including payroll. Was there disagreements with the redline?
We were still talking, I believe.
There was, there was some disagreements. It wasn't just a clarification of language, it was a scheduled holiday, if you're scheduled to work on a holiday, we currently make, and this language of double time is a little misleading to go to, everybody in the city gets paid for the holiday. So Thanksgiving, I use that one, Fourth of July, everybody is getting paid for the Fourth of July. Some of us are scheduled to work on the Fourth of July. So in our current contract, if it's a holiday, we make two times our normal rate, what some people call double time. To go to work, yes, we're getting paid holiday pay, just like everybody else in the city, but we're working on that holiday, so we make more than straight time, we make double. The current contract also says if you're called in on a Sunday, much like Costco pays their employees all time and a half on a Sunday if they are scheduled to work Sunday, because Sunday is a, you know, a holiday period of worship. Our current contract, if you work on Sunday, it's a double timed day, twice your rate of pay. The redline offer, the redline proposal is, if you work a holiday, it's straight time. If you're scheduled to work, I get that confused, holiday and overtime. If you're scheduled to work a holiday, our department's regular, we work all, somebody, one guy or two in the summer. Their proposal is you get straight time plus your holiday pay. That's how it currently is if we're scheduled as. I work Fourth of July this year, I will make fifty hours of pay because forty hours plus my holiday. Chris does not work on Fourth of July, he'll get paid for the Fourth of July, he'll also make his forty hours, he'll get paid for fifty hours, not working on, I work the holiday, he's up here.
Considering employee get time and a half.
Straight pay, straight pay, you're scheduled.
Straight pay, you're scheduled. So, yeah, if you work on the holiday, you get straight time, and you get your holiday. It's two times your hourly rate. If you're called in on a holiday, you get time and a half for the callout and your holiday. And so our language was just simply stating that. Doesn't matter what day of the week, doesn't matter whether it's a holiday or what. If you're called in, you get time and a half. On a holiday, you get your standard workday. If you work on that day, you get your hours worked, and you get your holiday. If you work over your workday, or come in early from your workday, it's overtime. So, you know, I think for us, we were just trying to simplify it in such a way that it would be clear to understand and create line items on a time card, where we didn't have to figure out if it was a Sunday at 2:00 AM, because again, the holiday says it's for a standard workday. There was some confusion about the city and the union, whether a holiday was a twenty-four hour period or a standard workday, because the contract says you get paid holiday for a standard workday. There's really like three articles kind of in battle with one another, right? And that's what we're trying to clarify. Is it a callout? Is it a holiday? Is it two times? Is it Christmas? Is it Thanksgiving? So we're just trying to clarify it to say, you're called out, it's called out. It's a holiday, it's holiday. If you work that day, you get paid hours worked. I guess, I can't speak for my group specifically, but we've, I felt at least like that was very clear and would be easily understood by our payroll department.
I speak to that one more time.
I guess, go through the minutes, okay?
Yeah, no, certainly, thank you.
So, currently, if you're called out on a holiday or a Sunday, you get your time plus double time, and that's what disagreement is. They wanna do a time and a half on a Sunday or a holiday, we just wanna keep the double time for a Sunday or a holiday, which, yes, we're getting paid for the holiday. We feel the holiday, like a Sunday, is a twenty-four hour period. Christmas doesn't start at 5:00 AM and end at 8:00 PM, or 5:00 PM. I mean, I don't, that's our main thing, is it should be the day from twelve o'clock to eleven fifty-nine, that we feel that holiday or Sunday.
Is there a way, I mean, does anybody else have questions, I wanna take over?
Chris, you wanna restate what you just said and make sure everybody heard that?
Yes, on the, our current, so currently, if I get called out on a holiday or Sunday, it'd be anywhere from midnight, or excuse me, twelve oh one AM Sunday till midnight would be basically Monday. I would get double time for those, for those two hours. Those two hours would be not regular, not straight, they would be double time for a Sunday. So that's the only, unless I worked earlier that day, that's the only thing I get paid for. Now on the holiday, yes, I, just like everybody else in the city, am getting paid to be at home. If I get a month call, yes, I'm getting my standby pay. Once I get called, when I go out and respond to something, to that twenty-four hour period, I would get double time, which, two times straight and paid for those two hours.
Well, here's the way I understood it. I could be wrong. I understood it as you were scheduled to work Fourth of July, and you, so you're the person that was scheduled to work Fourth of July, calls in sick, and so now someone has to come in on that person's behalf. I understood then they would get the double time, because they're being inconvenienced by coming in on a day they weren't scheduled, they already had plans on a holiday. But otherwise, if you were scheduled, you would just get that time and a half or regular straight pay plus holiday.
Great, so, this may clarify, it may not. This is a real case scenario. I work swing shift, Fourth of July. I know I was getting, I'm working Fourth of July. I'll go in at noon or two in the afternoon, and I'll work till midnight or one in the morning. Our normal double shift at the water plant in the summer. You know, the holiday, somebody's gotta work it, I've worked many of them. But by a normal worktime, and what the city proposed is this, you know, our normal workday is five to three thirty. So technically, I'm not even working on a holiday because I'm well outside that, I'm working swing shift. What we're proposing is to keep the contract the same, and a holiday is like you have a workday, it starts at twelve oh one AM and it ends at eleven fifty-nine.
Is that written that clear in the contract? I don't know, like I...
Chris, I don't have my copy in front of me, but it stated what the work period is for the week.
When you gave me the talking points when we had our meeting, is that pretty much a snippet from the contract?
Yes.
Put you on the spot, you look this far away. Don't you have better glasses?
So, Chris makes two points. One is, one is, if it's a non-scheduled, if the scheduled holiday, I'll just use the example, I'll work Fourth of July, I'll get paid fifty hours for the week. Working swing shift, Fourth of July. Chris will be camping, he'll also get paid fifty hours for the week. If not work the holiday, I would, I do. We didn't touch that, that's the way the contract reads, we didn't touch that.
Well, that's, if I'm correct, that's the city, that's the city employee camp too, right? They get paid for a holiday.
Yes. So, I work the holiday, Chris does, and we both get paid for fifty hours, and we both get paid for a holiday. I get straight time for my forty hours, he gets straight time for his forty. That's in the contract, that's something that's never been made. What is also in the contract is, if I am not scheduled to work the holiday, but I'm either called in because somebody's called in sick, or I'm on call and I come in and have to work the holiday, then because it's a holiday and not just a Tuesday afternoon or Tuesday evening, it's a holiday away from my family, away from my holiday activities, the contract has for many, many years that that employee will make double his rate of pay even at the holiday, or because of the sun, it's interrupting their family day, their worship day, that's the way the contract has been for many, many negotiations. Our contract, we proposed, just kept that language. And is there some confusion in the language? Maybe there is, but it's never been that confusing to anybody in the city for many, many years.
Well, I think, I think it has, and they just have brought it up, because I think, I mean, obviously, there's, they're having issues with, and totally correct me, Nikki, if I'm speaking wrong, having issues with kind of figuring out the payroll and the time and when, and that's what sounds like the issue kind of lies.
Yeah, I mean, I think a good example is exactly what they said. You have all these scenarios, and so we want to pay accurately, we wanna pay by what we're supposed to do. And so we've had a little bit of changeover in payroll, and we're asking that person to make sure that they look at the processes and make sure that they're paying accordingly. And these questions come up, and if the language was clear for us to be able to understand, because you've got holidays, you have an overtime working on holidays, and then you've got callout, and they're all kind of working with each other, but they're all different roles. And so I think what I can say though is during negotiations, if you watch those video, holiday, overtime, comp time was still a discussion that was continuing. So we can battle it out here, but that was a topic that we knew, should we continue to negotiate, needed more conversation. And we pushed that away a little bit so that we could focus on trying to get other things done that wouldn't require as much conversation. So I appreciate the examples, I think you guys do too, but we already know that that's, should you guys continue to negotiate, that's more conversation for us to be able to continue to have. And for them to look at our language, for us to try to understand what they're saying, and continue that conversation.
I just have a comment.
Counselor Clyde.
So when we entered into negotiations, or agreed to enter into negotiations, we had our, our points that we said, these are the things that we didn't want to, we weren't going to negotiate on, but it seems like these things are still there. We're still talking about, we're still talking about the vacation as double time, and we're still talking about at-will employment versus just cause, when we said we weren't gonna negotiate on that. So we went into this saying, these are the things we don't wanna negotiate on, but they're still there. It doesn't, it seems like we just hit a wall and, I mean, you guys aren't willing to do that, so what? I'm just confused why we're still talking about negotiating.
Because the way that we first, when it was explained to me, and then digging into it deeper, it was not clear. It was very confusing to the actual, okay, when are they getting paid, when are they not getting paid, what does this actually two hours look like? I understood the two hours, you get called in with the next thirty minutes, within that two hours, you get an additional two hours, which doesn't sound like that's not the case, or at least needs to be written to be clearer. That's why I'm still talking about it, because if I'm gonna make a decision to say, I'm not gonna negotiate with you guys anymore, I'm gonna make sure that I understand this contract and they had a chance to understand it, and I'm not gonna just make a decision willy-nilly, because this is their livelihood, this is their work, and it's important that I understand it before I make those.
Counselor Spickelmeyer, and then Ringo Pat.
Thank you, I guess my question to Counselor Horstman though, so your line of questioning is, is what you're kind of getting at, I'm hearing is that maybe the delays were caused by confusion?
Well, hundred percent. I mean, that's what I got out of the recordings. Not to mention the fact that they didn't even understand the non-negotiable, they read that as, oh, we just don't wanna negotiate those things, so we're just standing the contract as it is. Whether that was the right way to look at that, I don't know, but there's obviously going into this negotiation, there has been mass confusion, and it kind of seems like on both sides.
Well, I hope today this might help clear things up. I've been involved in negotiations for well over twenty years, and this is the first time we've gone into a negotiations with the things that we could not negotiate on, and most of those there were the major things that's always negotiated in every contract we've been in. So this is an altogether new way of doing things and stuff, you know what I mean? Negotiations to us, when we have gone into it, is, we're pretty much able to negotiate, you know, pretty much everything in the contract, whether it's a short negotiation, or, you know, like we've said, you know, word change and stuff like that there. So when you try and go into something, and basically, you only have two things that you can negotiate on, that just doesn't seem very fair or an open negotiation. And, you know, the way that we've always done it and expected to be able to go into it again, sit down, okay, these are our concerns, this is your concerns, how can we work it out? This time we came in, okay, we're not gonna do any of this, we can't change any of this, these are walls that you cannot go outside of. So that threw off, you know, our negotiations completely, because it basically allowed too little things to negotiate about, and everything that affected every employee in the city, whether their union or not, was shut down, nowhere. We cannot change, this is what the Council wants, we can't, you know, we can't do anything about this. So, you know, I think that right there was another big hurdle to try and get over, as something completely new. You know, that we had no idea how to go about it, and kind of felt, you know, that we wasn't having negotiations, we were being told, this is all, and we need to change wording. And one of the parts of that there is, most of the contract wants to refer to the personnel policy. Okay, parts of that, we have no problem, but personnel policy changes on a regular basis, we've been informed it's in the process of being written, rewritten right now. So how do you have anything to stand on when you've got a revolving policy? This is why we want things... This is why we want things, you know, in the contract specifically, so that it can't be changed every other week. Like, you know, I hope, I hope that kind of helped, that we got altogether different type of negotiations than we've ever done.
Well, Pat, thank you for those comments. Let me just say for the record again, because I know we have someone in the back. Uh, the policy doesn't get changed on a weekly basis, probably on an annual basis is fair to say. And it's meant to be a living, breathing document. It's not a perfect document, so there are always going to be changes to that policy, so that's how uh, I do the policy, and I think that's how the council has approached it, so. Which is different than what the contract is, that's true. Uh, but there are things in that policy, I mean, that some things you already follow, some things that you don't, some things maybe that the city would like to have you follow. And not just you, but the other representative groups as well, and, and I think for some good reasons. Ryan?
And I wouldn't say, Pat did bring up a a unique situation, um, regarding the union and the council. This is the most interaction I've had with any city council. I don't think it's a bad thing, I honestly don't. Had those stipulations been told to you this, they were going in contract negotiations? And this is the contract, and we don't want to change anything in this contract, therefore, we aren't going to. That would have been a hundred and eighty degrees difference. We would have gone in negotiations, and we would have been told that council does not want to approach these things. Okay? But when we're told the council doesn't want to approach these things, but we're changing these four major things within your contract, and you can't negotiate? There's no point in negotiating, because those are our points in our contract. Those are the things that, that we, we negotiate in good faith, we fight for in good faith, for our employee group. That's not how it was presented. It was presented, we're going to change these things, and we don't want to, we don't want to negotiate them. That's, that's not on our contract. Just saying. That's, that's not good. In our opinion. Again, something as simple as this contract's not going to change, and we aren't going to negotiate, versus, we're changing this contract, and we're not going to negotiate. That's a night and day difference. And Pat, thanks for bringing that up, because that's, that's, that's a big deal. We, we enter negotiations because that's what's important every three years, that is what is, that is our, that is our doctrine. That's the reason that we that's the reason we exist with the city, because those things, they work for our employees. And they always have, and they're not much, those core values have never really changed in our, under it, ever. But now they're changing, or they're, we change, and now you guys are told that we aren't going to negotiate on it. So, we don't, we don't need to waste everybody's time to come in here and try to get more money for. We don't. That's going to waste it. We could just go to the council and say, look, we need some money for this night. The contract, the reason we came in here, and the reason we figure back and forth, and we're at each other, is because that contract is vitally important. It hasn't been permitted. If it wasn't being changed, our negotiation would be very, very fast and very quick. If we radically change it, it's going to be painful.
Okay, I'm going to ask our city attorney, see if she can help us with understanding on this. Jennifer, would you mind?
Jennifer Tingano, I am the city attorney, but, um, I acted as, on the negotiating team, and not as an attorney, in the sense of, I wasn't there to advise anyone on anything, but to participate in the discussions. And I think one of the difficulties on the city side is, like Counselor Horace mentioned, pointed out, there was a lot of confusion. And that was because there's a lot of confusion because the union employee groups interpreted the contract differently, and they didn't come with a uniform and unified position on different aspects. Like Ryan pointed out, um, you know, there are different employee groups within their union that interprets different provisions of the same contract differently. And that's what the city staff are trying to get clarifying language in the contract for. Um, another, uh, barrier to successfully negotiating is, um, there seems to be disagreement about what the role of the union is um, to advocate on behalf of these employee groups. And even Ryan just said this just now, that they don't really see the need to advocate for higher boot allowance, because they feel like they can come to the council and just ask for it, and you'll, they'll get it. But that's exactly what a union and a bargaining group is there for, is to advocate for the union group. And even when it came down to wages, um, on, on the video, and a part of the negotiations, they felt like it was the city's responsibility to propose wage increases, and not necessarily their bargaining group. Um, it kind of frustrated staff, because the, the issue is, and what's the point of even bargaining? Because some of it was held up, because they didn't understand certain terms or provisions of their own contract that we're asking for revisions, or we're providing clarifications, and they, they, you know, disagree with this. We asked them, you know, tell us what you want this to say, and we would come to the next meeting, and they wouldn't have that language that they want in the contract. It would be, you know, will you tell us how, how it should be, and then we will look it over. And that's not really productive, because the city staff already does that when it formulates the personnel policy. Um, you know, we, we took the time and we talked to supervisors, um, we, we formulated different wage, uh, increases. As Nikki pointed out, we proposed two different schedules to them. Um, I mean, only now are we really hearing that, at least from what I know, that wage increases wasn't even an issue that they intended to negotiate. Because, you know, they felt like what they're saying now, that, yes, the wages weren't fair, but, um, you know, that was not something that was clearly communicated to the city, that wage increases weren't on the, or weren't really an issue for them, because that's exactly what Ryan said, that's the point of negotiating every three years, is to negotiate these types of wage bases. So, it, a lot of what we were doing was trying to educate them on what some of the terms were, and why we needed clarification, and so we were essentially bargaining with ourselves. And that's not productive, and that doesn't create, you know, that really, uh, raised the question amongst the negotiating, uh, team of, why are we even at the table when we could incorporate all of this into the personnel policy, work with the directors of the various groups, work with the different work groups in general, and formulate policies and procedures that are specific to each individual working group, to give them the best benefits possible, uh, under our personnel policy. And, you know, it's a little disheartening to hear now that they didn't really see the need to even do, make any changes to the contract um, at this point, where, you know, one of the key things is, that we clarified at the beginning, is this is supposed to be a new contract. What do we want this new contract to say? Well, yes, the council provided direction to the negotiating team not to negotiate these particular provisions. Um, that doesn't mean that, that only leaves one or two other things to be negotiated. There's all kinds of different things that could potentially be negotiated, that we tried to encourage, but, you know, they just weren't receptive to, because there was still underlying confusion about, you know, is this something we can negotiate, is it not? Is, is this what this term says, is it not? And that, that really is a hindrance and created a lot of confusion. And I think, you know, you can see it now, where even now, there's not a unified message coming from the different members of their own negotiating team about what, what is important to them, and what the goals of negotiation were.
Thank you. Jennifer, council, any questions, or Counselor Wright?
Yeah, when it comes to the, the personnel policy, um, just procedurally, what is the oversight from the council on making changes to it, or overseeing changes that are being proposed to it?
So, um, what, what we do on the inside is, um, directors typically will bring their concerns with a section or language within the personnel policy. We'll sometimes discuss it at our Monday morning meetings, to say, hey, here's an area where we think it could better serve of the citizens, but serve the employees as well, and so we'll talk about those changes, we'll put them on the screen here. Director Province will kind of ramrod that, and, uh, once we have enough to bring to the council to make it, I guess, um, a full agenda item, then it'll be brought to the council, and then council can debate it, ask questions, and if they vote to make those changes, then the personnel policy is updated. But it's a plan that belongs to the council. The council approves that plan, it's, it's your plan for the city employees. And so, everything in it is, is under your direction and your guidance for the non-representant employees. Now, the three, uh, representing groups will tear their, uh, agreements to the personnel policy in certain areas. It makes sense to do that, and or it may not make sense to, um, lengthen a contract by twenty pages and repeat word for word, every word in the personnel policy. Now, we just heard a minute ago, that might be an exception to it, where, um, you know, maybe the representative might say, well, we don't like that, because we want certainty for the next three years. Well, you know, that can be a, that can work for you, or that can work against you. And certainly, um, if there were a simple change that had to be made in a personnel policy that was not consistent with one of the collective labor agreements, change that, that would require more work. You'd have to go back and get agreement from the group to do that, you know, make an amendment to the agreement and bring that forth. So, there's probably, you know, pros and cons to both. But, um, the, uh, personnel policy manual itself, again, belongs to the city council. So, you can put whatever you want in there, you can take, whatever you want to take out of it. Okay, thank you. Your comments? Concerns? Counselor Wright?
I got a comment. So, a- as I was going through the personnel policy and, and looking at the, the things that the union wanted, they seemed very similar to me. I, I did not see a lot of difference. The main area where I saw the major difference was really in the the, the at-will or just cause, and the, the arbitration grievances process. That's really the only area where I saw a major difference. And I, I would think the, the boot allowance, just from previous discussions, that type of language, it, it, high potential that gets added into the personnel policy, or at least we're review adding that into the personnel policy, because it's a good idea. And from previous conversations I've had, there, there was discussion on safety glasses, eyewear, that we're, we're looking at options on, you know, how do we do that as a personnel policy, or does that get built into the vision plan? So, I, I just don't see a big difference between the two, and, uh, you know, i- if the council, or as the mayor said, the council has the oversight of the personnel policy, I mean, nothing's going to squeak through without our oversight, which is the same as, as the, the union contract. We oversee that every three years. We oversee the personnel policy. It, it's going to be the same people overseeing whichever document.
Let me, let me just add one more comment. Um, so, the mayor does not have the discretion to change that policy. But there's something in the policy that the mayor doesn't like, and says, hey, I know that's what it says, but this is how I'm going to do it. Mayor doesn't have that authority, and it's spelled out in the policy manual. So, it has very tight borders on it, you know, that, that keep, keep you on track, keep you on the rails. Now, it's possible you could misinterpret the policy or misapply that, that's always a possibility, and that's where you have things such as preferences, or at least a review or a question or something, but, um, again, it's, it's meant to have some pretty strict guardrails on it, that says, this is how this operates, and if you need to change it, then you take it to the council, and the council makes changes to the policy for the employees.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Counselor Horace, man?
To Jennifer again. Um, sorry to call you in, Jennifer, but I just wanted clarification on the contract. As far, say a new council comes in, and they are looking through this contract midway, right, it's not time for renegotiation. Do they have legal standing to be like, we want to change this?
I'd have to look at the specific provision for that, but my understanding of the contract term is that it's a three-year term, and that in the event that the city wants to modify it, they have to get, give notice to the union and get approval of any potential modification before a modification, modification can be made. Council would not be able to unilaterally make a decision to modify any of the contract.
And does that go with canceling as well, like if they choose to not?
With canceling, if, well, choosing not to honor it and canceling it are two different things. Um, and without necessarily giving legal advice, the contract does say the process in order to cancel it. And, um, if the council were to cancel it, you could only do so if you give a hundred and twenty, I think it's a hundred and twenty days notice prior to the termination of the end date, and then, um, then it would end. It wouldn't be able to be terminated mid-point. The way I understand the employee hand, but that is not the same. Because the council can choose to change it, move things around, but they don't have to be notified and/or give any kind of, well, I don't think any of the state employees, do they have to be notified, or have an opinion about, we're going to change something?
In the personnel policy?
Right, if we just decided to change that.
Well, again, um, most of the changes that I've been involved with, just started in this room, with the Monday morning leadership group. And, uh, sometimes those ideas originate at the director level, sometimes they originate at the employee level, you know, so we've had both. Um, but it usually goes through a, a month dating process, I mean, I don't, I'm not aware of any rash decisions that, uh, have been made in this manually since I've been exposed to it, so, um.
The difference is, they, a contract, we have to notify them with like a hundred and twenty days or something like that, whereas employee handle, we are not required to do that.
I, I guess not, but, um, again, I think when there's a change that's been looked at in policy manual, the directors, uh, it's their job to communicate that down to the managers, and the supervisors, and the employees, and solicit input from them. So, you know, if they don't do that, that's probably not a good thing, but, um, that's the way it's.
I'm just trying to make sure I'm laying out the difference between the two, right, because there's obviously an opinion that there is difference between the two. But I just wanted to make declare a line, this is the difference. How I understand.
Counselor Klein?
Just to kind of take on to what, um, Counselor Wright was saying, there's a lot of things in the contract that would be great to bring to the, um, the personnel policy, and it, as it should be, that it should be fair for everyone.
My two, my two concerns, um, one, I, I'm going to be honest, I don't know if your union is representing for the guys at the very bottom, right, like everybody. I'm trying to think of a good way to explain, uh, like you're a straight light person, and then you're, you're a road worker to you guys that work in the water plant. I'm concerned that that, that they're not fully being represented to give the proper raises, looking at them, saying, hey, you know what, they are being low, and they have been low, let's look at maybe getting them to bump up, and, and worrying about them as well. If our only four concerns, our only concerns are these four items, my begs to question is, are we looking at everybody in the union and making sure that they're well represented? Um, and this is just how I'm seeing it, and I could be wrong, and this is my opinion. Uh, if, if I were to agree that we would go forward in negotiation, one, I would like to see that we actually got this document, all these things that you guys are talking about wanting to to keep it read, where every one of your employees read it the same way. Everybody reads it the same way, there's no confusion. Uh, finance isn't confused about how to charge it, or how the, how that goes, or getting different requests. But I don't know how the rest of the council feels, uh, that, that's my biggest concerns with going forward, and so I, I would like to say, hey, you got a month. We have to, this language has to be clear, and if it's not clear by that time, we're not going to continue. And so, we're going to stop. I'll let the other council say, but that, that's my concerns and my.
Mayor, can I comment?
Uh, other council comments first? Okay, Ryan, go ahead, please. No, okay, Ryan, go ahead, please.
So a little bit of history, last negotiation, we talked about a new pay structure. That pay structure elevated most work groups up considerably. I say most work groups. The only group that was not positively affected was the water plant. We were the higher paid group. We did not benefit from that. The rest of our team benefited, created, benefited distribution, collection, waste water. Everybody benefited. And I think Mayor made reference to that during our negotiations, that there was this uplift of employee wages. It was a good thing, it was a great thing. When we came in this year, of course, we don't come in and say, we want a five percent rate. We want to, but we don't do that.
I kind of wish you guys did, to be honest. Because we can say, we can say no, but let's meet in the middle, right?
What we do is we say.
Not saying we're going to honor five percent.
What we do say is, can we look at some living raises? Some living raises, we all know that's a real thing, that's a measurable metric. It is. And the way the city measures it is the first quarter of every year. And we came in asking for more than two and a half percent. The city is adamant about staying at two and a half percent there across the board. Okay, we understand that. So with that one percent pay adjustment with two and a half percent, three and a half percent, and we as a union said, okay with that. I mean, we don't work in a vacuum. We represent an employee group who tells us what's important and what's not important. This is what you want to fight for, this is what we don't. Or these are priorities, these are extras that could or could not be discussed. These usually don't get discussed because our hands are full with the stuff that's important. The union piece is important. Not the union is important, there's a pack piece of importance, but the, and then the negotiating team takes their wishes to the table. So that's how we vote. As far as already being represented, everybody knows that in the technician union, they all know who's an eligible member, whether they pay dues or not, if they're, if they are represented by them. You know, when it comes to making the city marketable or attracting new employees, of course, that's important, that's, we want that. So it's hanging on to long-term employees and longevity. We proposed a benefit, longevity benefit, that's in our contract. There's obviously room for negotiation, that was a little extra. But we thought, you know, three years ago it was important to get everybody, the lower starting wages up higher to make the city more attractive, more marketable. We agreed to that. I think it's worked. I think it was a good plan. We did not address the long-term because there wasn't much of a bump three years ago on the long-term employees. So we proposed this year a longevity pay based on your service. It was a suggestion we brought to the table. So I, as the president, as part of the negotiating team and as part of the board, with many of whom are here tonight, I strongly feel that we do represent everybody who is, every position that is represented. Can we meet everybody who needs or wants? No. And some people have a hard time accepting it. No. Years I've been asked, please, please, have the city help us pay for ourselves, we all can, we all use our phones at work. Great idea, I don't think that's unfair. Is that really going to help you put food on the table for your kids? I mean, is that really going to help your retirement? Probably not. Would be a nice benefit? Sure. But it's not a priority. So, and that's just one example. We have a lot of these individual concerns, which I don't take lightly, but we only have so much time to negotiate and we have to focus on those topics.
I make a, just real quick with clarity. I was not suggesting that you come in with these outrageous rates to negotiations, or as I was saying, to make sure that when we come to negotiations and they were saying, no, hey, I want, okay, we can't have this, but I want this. But just a little more fight on that end, right? Try to, that's what I was trying to.
That's fine. Our fight is, our fight is to maintain it. That's okay.
Do you have any additional information to supplement? Maybe what has happened in the past or especially like last year negotiations, because they're a little bit different than this year. But just, is there anything else we can tease out of that, Ryan's comments?
I guess, you know, the city strives to be prepared to provide an offer and hear what the other side has to say. You know, some of the things being said, we weren't necessarily told. Like I said, our last offer that we received from them was a two and a half percent COLA plus a one percent for the next three years and then a high COLA thereafter. You know, we've tried to look at fairness for our employees amongst areas where we can't align. You know, part of the pay that we provided was looking at those positions that while we did elevate them last time, you know, it's been three years. And, you know, for example, custodians are the lowest paid and part of our request was to bring them up. Traffic and streets, you know, CDL is a little bit more costly and difficult to obtain, but looking at bringing them up. Looking at our electrician, which, you know, I've heard, I've heard and we've considered, you know, maybe looking at moving up that position. And so, you know, I understand wanting the one percent amongst all and everybody kind of benefiting. But, you know, we didn't get any kind of real repercussion back from those type of employees as to whether that was something they were willing to fight for, was to get those lower level positions or some of those positions, maybe not necessarily recruitment, that's ideal, right? We want people with CDLs, but also to make them alignment with, you know, potential comparable wages. So, I don't know if you had.
Ryan, just if there's anything to add to Ryan's comments, last year, you know, it, I think it was a little bit different negotiating process than this year, how we moved things around on the pay scale. And, you know, we've talked some different ideas this year and whether or not that is hitting all the groups, if everybody's being heard, you know. Oh, and then the idea of longevity pay, a new one. And one of the, one of the positions, at least that I've taken, that's arriving at the city was when I, when I discuss items with the represent groups and told them all that I want to be equitable and sustainable in anything that I do, because I don't agree to something and then the city tells you in a year or two, we can't afford it, you know, this should be sustainable upfront, so that long-term is there, that predictability is there. The same thing with being equitable. So like when ASME came and suggested, hey, what can we do about possibly getting prescription work glasses? We said, well, let's take a look at it. And so it becomes more than just a simple request for ASME, because I look across the city, if it's good for ASME, it's got to be good for everyone else to have prescription safety glasses. So if you just look at it from a number standpoint, that could get really big really fast, you know, so how can we try to provide a benefit that you're asking the city to consider, but same time be able to sustain that benefit down the road, but also to be equitable across every employee that works for the city? And so an item like longevity pay, we don't have for anyone else, that was going to be tough. And that's what I said when we met. And I think part of that pay, as I understand it, was to try to have offset some of the overtime that you may lose or other pays that you might lose because of some of the suggested changes in the guidance that the council provided at the beginning of negotiations. And if that's not correct, please correct me, but that's my understanding.
It was the give and take with the forty oh.
Yeah. Yeah, so, you know, that's just kind of how I look at it, trying to be equitable and sustainable and it kind of goes through those filters for me, you know. That's how, that's the mayor's bias, that's what I look at. And I think I shared that with, you know, with you. So I was just trying to make sure there wasn't anything that wasn't said so that the council, some of the council members were not here three years ago. And so they benefit by having maybe a little bit longer view of other negotiations, you know, trying to say, well, here's how we did it three years ago, here's how we're doing it this year. It's worked last time, maybe it doesn't work this time. So just try to, you know, kind of have a little bit more content to some of these discussions before they make their decision tonight.
Well, I guess I can add that last negotiations, you know, Ryan mentions a new pay plan and the city did come up with that in order to create some consistency amongst grades and step increases, so that you had a clear distinction of a percentage between grades and a percentage that an employee would understand, every year they're getting that three and a half percent, I think it is. And so, you know, creating that stability, regular, understood pay matrix for them did elevate them. And in our offer this year, it was really just looking at, you know, originally some of those positions that we felt could use a little bit of an increase versus no move and everybody getting a one percent. So I'll just kind of leave it at that.
Thank you. Councillors, for their questions, comments? Councilor Spicklemeyer?
I guess listening to all the things, I kind of, I agree with Councilor Horstman that there seems to be a lot of confusion. Some of the things I was confused about, we were tired of doing it, but I believe that may have been a lot of what caused some of the delays. I could support a short two or three week extension, but nothing more than that, right? It just needs to get done. And if it was an extension, everybody just needs to really buckle down and not do one meeting a week, you know, get it done two, three weeks, whatever it takes to get the negotiations done.
And with all due respect, I don't know if we've had a week or we've had just one meeting, but I think we've had two meetings each week.
It doesn't add up to seven.
To elaborate on Councilman Spicklemeyer's, the meetings and us, you know, having meetings, several of us have came in on our days off also to accommodate the meetings, because we're not just going there. If I'm off, I'm not coming in, so we can't have a meeting. But we try our best to.
And I think you should. That's the union's job.
I just echo Councilor Spicklemeyer. My vote would be to continue negotiations with a deadline of three weeks, no more. If we've not made the final decision, then stop negotiating. Guidelines, you must clear, you must have clear language, so all who are under the union contract understands at the same time. Not sure about the line items, cutting out those, but I guess the rest of the council will decide how we go forward, but that would be also my vote.
And that's your motion?
I can make it into a motion.
And that date would be the twenty fifth?
Oh, thank you.
That would be fine.
Mayor, did you want to look at something further before I make a motion?
Well, what I want to ask is, I think these are the four items that council presented to ASME.
Correct.
So councillors, I would advise, at least for a starting point, that you ask the union representatives here tonight if they have any misunderstandings or questions about these four items, because we're going to be back at it. And then when we meet two or three weeks, you'll be able to tell them that we had an agreement or we had an understanding or we didn't. Is that fair?
So in other words, Mayor, just so I make sure I understand, you're wanting the council to say which items we're like, we're not doing this and which items.
Part of this concern is because this was your direction.
Correct.
And so if they have any questions about that, they should tell you tonight, because when we go back into negotiations, if there's not a clear understanding, we're going to be back here in two weeks.
Right.
And we're not going to be any further down the road. But that would be my suggestion that you at least consider.
I agree. For me, oh, sorry, did you?
No, no, I was just saying I agree.
Oh, okay. For me, the agreements, I'm not honestly going to, I'm not going to die on that hill. I don't really care if we keep the agreements in there as is. The overtime, this one I went back and forth on. Originally, I kind of felt if you, so if you had a Monday off and then you come in on the rest of the week and then you get called in again, so now you have to work additionally, plus you get paid your day off, that you shouldn't get overtime because you took that day off. But I am going back and forth on it, because I will say, like, at my job, if I have Monday off and then they say, hey, we have overtime. Usually it's not required most of the time, or if it is, they give us the option to keep that day for like another vacation day. So I can basically take that day back, I didn't use my vacation, now I still have my vacation. So I still get a benefit out of coming into work and not getting overtime. I think if we just take that away altogether, you probably will have people that just don't want to come in. Why am I going to come in if you're not going to pay me overtime?
Councilor, if I could just interrupt, you already voted on this. And that direction has been set. That's not negotiable tonight unless you make a motion to put it back on the table.
Well, I thought that's basically what we're discussing is whether.
This was passed and given to the negotiators on both sides of the table. So unless those are changed, those are set. And what I think it would be good for the council to ask so that when we come back in two weeks or three weeks, we don't have any people that are, they're regretful about what they bought or purchased. This is what it is. And so I think what you should do, what I would advise, is that you ask the represent group, they're here tonight in front of you, do you agree or disagree or understand or not understand any of these four items? And check those off before you make a motion. I think that would be important, because otherwise it's going to be difficult.
Well, I guess I'll let them know. Letting you know where some of the marks are. I'm not sure what I'm putting.
So I guess I don't, I don't understand as to why you couldn't make a motion if enough people felt that that item was worth going back on, because they have a better understanding now of that item and why it is important to us? Why couldn't that be at least made? Keep the other three things in there, but say, you know, the one that you're talking about could be looked at further.
Councilor Wright? Yeah. So maybe I can add a little context into this, at least from my point of view. What I'm looking for is increased agility. We can change things, you know, of course, not rapidly on the fly, but if something comes up and we're hearing from a director or managers or from employees, this is a challenge we're having, we got to address this in the personnel policy. I don't have to wait three years to address some concern that's coming from the employees. The other piece is efficiency. So if there's complex language in a contract that's making it difficult to budget or to pay out employees consistently and correctly, we need to address that, that needs to be addressed. So those are two main reasons why we were looking, at least I was looking at how overtime is written in the contract, how on-call and giving calls is written in the contract. And the grievances, the concerns there is the, at least from my standpoint, the added complexities around addressing disciplinary issues that need to be addressed if one occurs. So I just want to add that, that's, because I don't see we're far off of this personnel policy at all. And we've got, so if we, if we made a motion that we're not going to continue with negotiations, if I understand correctly, this isn't going to, this isn't going to end until the end of September. We have time to address concerns in the personnel policy that we find. Is that fair?
That would be, that would be correct.
So that, that's the way I'm looking at this, if that helps at all.
Mr. Mayor? Our pet? I've got a question to put to all of the councillors, and I don't know if this would be important to you folks, but I know it is to us. We look at all these rules, these changes.
We look at all these rules, these changes and stuff like this, say the 40-hour work week and all that there. This is just stuff on paper. These are actions that you're wanting to do. Repercussions, like you went and mentioned, okay, say I took a day off in the middle of winter. There's a major snowstorm blowing in. Do you, how many people do you think you're going to get to get up at midnight and come in for straight pay? Other things, the water tank burst. How many people do you think came in, left their families, forgot what they were doing because the city needed it? This was an emergency. This type of stuff, and I could be wrong, but I feel as being overlooked as to the employees, what we do give up. And feel that this type of stuff that we can't negotiate and is going to be pushed on us, basically it takes away our incentive to be there for the citizens. I know I've spent several Christmases, Thanksgiving, out taking care of snowstorms, frost, R-Rex, getting up in the middle of the night out there in freezing cold temperatures. You know, and now you're wanting to take away the stuff that makes us want to do that. You know, it's, and most people don't even, most of the employees don't even understand these contracts. They don't understand the personnel policy. That's why they put it to us to come here and try and get it across. Like I said, I've got 33 years in, going to be starting 34 here shortly. I've been very dedicated to the citizens as well as the city. I've given up a lot personally, spent a lot of extra hours making sure that the citizens are safe, that they have water, that they have sewer. And, you know, to basically put down these walls that was set forth that we cannot negotiate on or be able to do anything about. You know, it just really takes away the incentive to be there after hours.
Councillor Horstman?
When you got, when we have a new employee, they, do they review the handbook and have to sign it, like, hey, I read this, I know I have to follow these rules? Do they do that with the union contract as well?
No, not because for six months, they're basically not under the union. We do not sign them up until after the six months because there really isn't anything we can do if they do this.
Who says the six months, though? Who says that timeline?
The city's. And the contract, union contract, actually. Because non-represented are a year.
I think that can be changed.
Well, it's a probationary period.
Yeah.
But it sounds like the city is okay with changing that probation.
Well, the way I understand it, they don't want it.
Nikki, I'm going to call on Nikki.
Okay, so this is part of the confusion. The past, if you're called in, that's a call-out. Call-outs paid at time and a half. What we're proposing is that you don't have to have worked 40 hours to get call-out pay at time and a half. We're saying overtime is when you start your day or end your day later or choose to work an additional day. That's overtime. If you are called in, whether you're on standby or whether the standby person calls you in to help them, that's a call-out at time and a half. So, and then the other thing is, the personnel policy is acknowledged by new employees. We don't have anything to do with the union's rules about six months or when they can start. We don't have any rules regarding that. When they can begin with the union, that's a union business that we aren't a part of. Currently, the contract has a six-month probation. Council told us they want a directive of at-will. At-will would exclude, exclude a probation period because they're essentially at-will. But as far as signing them up for the union, that's not a responsibility of the city or we don't have any rules regarding it. We enroll them for payroll deductions when we're told by the union to do so.
It seemed like every time something is brought up, everything goes back to the pay. That was not my intent. My intent was the at-will, the not being able to feel that you have protection with the grievance. I mean, there's so much more other than just the pay that we are looking at here. And those, I mean, everything is what comes into effect in the employees' minds when they're asked to do stuff, when things are being taken away from them. You know, but it seemed, what I'm seeing anyway is every time something is brought up, it seems to go back to pay. That's, to me, that's a small portion. It's everything else that the employees, you know, are looking at. And when you are being limited as to what you can talk about and stuff to try and help the employees, you know, that, that's putting shackles, I feel, on us. And you shackle somebody, they're not going to go the extra mile. And I feel that over the years that I've been here, most employees go that extra mile because of what we get in the contract and stuff and what we are able to negotiate without binders or shackles. And like I said, the money's a small portion of it. I'm looking at the whole thing that was set forth by the council as not being able to be looked at, basically. And that's what I'm hearing from the members that I have contact with on a regular basis. Because I keep them informed of everything, what we get, they see, because that's who we're representing, that's who we're fighting for.
Brian?
I would just like to address Councillor Wright's concern about the contract. The contract can be reopened at any time within a negotiation period. So if there's a major city change and a major conflict with the contract, the city or the union can ask to reopen negotiations to address. It not happened in my time, in my 12 years in the city, that's never happened. It's three years of an agreement. Some changes are made to personnel policies, changes are made to council members or a mayor. But that three-year agreement, it has a sunset. It's got to be then renegotiated again. So it's not, what's good three years ago is there, so it is not necessarily good today. Again, back to what Pat is talking about, is the limitation on what we, on what you have decided is negotiable versus non-negotiable. We do not sit here and expect normal citizens of the city to understand what we do. That's, that's why we do what we do. We're unseen, we're unheard, people just don't know. We keep things running when everybody else is at home, everybody's done with their workday, and that's fine. Normally, our workday is like that, too. We come in, we do our job, we go home. But our job doesn't end when we go home. We're on call, we have to respond to these emergencies, whether it's a snowstorm, whether it's natural disaster, whether it's huge disasters like losing a water plant and having 24 employees show up. They do that because they're properly compensated, they're appreciated by the city, and it's shown within the contract. I don't think it's bad for them, but they don't. My biggest issue with the 40-hour work week, and we've had this discussion in many negotiations, is I know that if I don't, and I work in a department where overtime might be a pretty regular thing toward the end of the week or the weekend, people are leaving, going on vacation, if I'm sick on a Monday and I know that I'm probably going to be asked to work overtime at the end of the week, should I stay home? Because the city has told me for 10 years, do not, do not cause a pandemic, this is well before COVID. Signs hung in every bathroom, stay home, stay home, don't get the crews sick. Most of our crews are small, isolate together. I can tell you the water plant, one person brings his kid's sickness in from school and we are all sick for a week, at least. And that is not.
It's got that one person, too.
It happens, we've got two, we've got two outbreak monkey. But that's a real thing. And it was actually Chief Michael Bus from the fire department who gave us a class. And he said, if you're sick, stay home. The 40-hour work week is going to make people, and I'll keep myself in that, come to work when I probably maybe shouldn't. Because I know that when I have to respond to the city, not a call-out, the planned overtime event at the end of the week, I'm going to have to spend a work straight time because I even wanted to pay benefits that I earned that the city has offered me sick leave. Or I went to the doctor Monday morning and now I'm five hours behind on my 40 hours. But at the end of the day, we all want city crews to respond to work. That's what we all, that's what we've always had. And it's worked pretty well for the citizens. Obviously, everything's working great, everybody just goes home, gets a good night's sleep, and they'll come back and be together.
Councillor Spicklemeyer?
I guess for me, I'm getting the feeling this meeting is getting way off of the subject. The whole question here is whether or not we're going to agree to an extension of the bargaining. Whether or not we change a prior decision would have to be after we even decided if we were going to continue negotiations. You don't do it before. You don't decide to change something and then, you know, not negotiate. You have to decide whether or not we're going to continue negotiations, if we're going to do that. Then if somebody wanted to consider changing a prior decision, that's the process. I mean, we need to focus what we're at hand here, we're getting way off.
Councillor Wright?
If we, if we terminate, do a motion to terminate the collective labor agreement, is there anything to prevent the union from still existing or the union leaders proposing a contract to us six months from now or a year from now and saying, will you agree to this? Does that preclude anything of that nature?
Well, maybe that's a good question.
Wouldn't have a contract.
Yeah. You wouldn't, you would not have a contract, but, you know, if you had a motion to not renew the contract based on, so then, but one, they would be part of the non-rep group, then they would operate under the personnel policy plan, they would transition to, potentially to a different pay scale, because the job descriptions are not the same than the current pay scales for the non-reps. Or, you know, you would use the current pay scale they have and add it to that scale, something like that, because the jobs are unique, different than the non-reps. But, you know, there would be some cleanup that would need to be done to the non-rep pay scales and to the policy manual, because that would have to be added to it. You know, there would have to be some adjustments because it wouldn't just fit cleanly, you know? There are some differences in the two pay scales. For example, between the step increases for the represent groups, they have a 3% increase for each step. On a non-rep, it goes up four and a half percent. So they would actually probably get a higher step increase on their annual evaluations because you couldn't put them on that pay scale and say, well, you guys get three and everybody else gets four and a half. They have to absorb on that pay scale and be treated equally that way. So there would just be a lot of homework to do to make that happen. So at some point after that, if they wanted to try to go back and be recognized by the city, they could do that, certainly. I don't know what else I can say at this point, but that, that's, that would seem to be logical to me. They could still function as a group, as a represent group, they just wouldn't be recognized by.
I think the issue I'm having is if, if we don't address, like the mayor said, if we don't address these, like, I don't know, can we make a, as a council and say, are we willing to open up any of these for discussion? Or is it going to stay the same? Because from there, I think that's going to determine whether negotiations are even going to go anywhere. I don't know if we can do that, if there is to be a order.
Well, I, you know, I think you have two choices before you tonight, counsel. One of them would be to terminate the collective labor agreement that benefits current term, which should be September 30, 2025. Or you could motion to continue with negotiations with ASME. And I think it's reasonable that in that motion, you could also suggest that these were wiped out or whatever. You know, as part of your motion, it's a council action. So you would just need to get a majority group call on that, and it's probably not one that I'm going to vote on because it's a council decision, council action. So, you know.
I mean, to me, that makes more, that makes sense to, I don't know, it doesn't make sense to go into negotiation or into negotiations if we don't have that laid out, where the council feels on that, on those, on the subject. Because it's obviously important to them. And as far as I understand it, the council agrees that they don't want to negotiate on these. They say with their final decision, is there, do you feel worth negotiation, negotiating anymore?
I can't speak on behalf of the union.
Can you speak up, Brian, so I can?
Oh, I said I cannot speak for the union on that question. We're going to do everything we can to come up with a kind of agreeable contract. That's fair for the city and fair for the union. So will we continue to pursue those things? Probably, because that's what the union members have told us to, is important, the same thing is important here.
I think that's what you're saying, is that they're, they're not willing to budge on those things.
Speaking. I think you said you can't speak for the union.
Yeah.
I mean, it's kind of a hard thing to put on people.
I would have, we would have to have a meeting and say, look, this is, this is what they're offering or what they're proposing, but I can't answer it presently.
That's, like, they're saying that if we're not having communication with our members, that would be not having communication. I can't just say, you know, we're not yes or no because we haven't talked to every, all the members. They all get notifications of when we have our meetings. The last meeting, we actually had a really good turnout compared to normal. We had probably 75% of the new spring members there. And the other ones are invited to come, they can come to a meeting if they like it. We had twenty, we had two or three that came to a meeting that signed up that night before. So to ask us just to make a decision on the fly for, what do we got, 60 other people, I don't think it's fair to, for us.
I totally understand that. It's just my concern is that it is going to be a situation where, it might be a situation where they're, they're not going to take these off the table and that we're going to stand as our original negotiations where bringing these to the table isn't going to be, there's nothing going to be movement on it, as far as I understand, when we go down these. I can make a motion, but that, that's my biggest concern. I don't know if the other councils can.
Jennifer, please?
I just, I mean, I just wanted to say real quick, I think this goes to Councillor Spicklemeyer's earlier point. You asked the direct question, they've had 54 days and seven meetings to determine whether or not they would be willing to negotiate under those provisions that the council set way at the beginning of April. And even at this point, they have not addressed that with their bargain, or with their members. And so as the negotiating team and the union executive board and the union president is unable to make comment on what his members want at this point, almost six weeks later.
Please don't tell me what I. I can tell you what our union told us to do in negotiations. I gave you that list. That's what we're told to negotiate on. And that's how we pursued it.
And to comment on what Jennifer said, we knew what they had wanted before this meeting. We haven't had a chance to go back and say, if they vote to negotiate, there's no changing these. We haven't had a chance. Before, we knew going into it, yes, that's what they felt. But now if things change, maybe it's okay. But now if things change, maybe say, okay, stick to those four things. And that's what we have to do. We haven't talked to them about that part of it. And the fifty-four days is, yeah, it's calendar days, that's not really fair to say that we've had that long. We've moved stuff for them, they've moved stuff for us, people have been on vacation. I mean, it's not a perfect world, no. So for her to say that we have already talked to them about that.
Now, now let's be professional.
I am professional, I'm just saying, it's not a perfect world, we know that. I know it's not professional, but, um, you know, we haven't talked.
You can say, I disagree with that comment, but don't, don't attack her.
Okay, sorry, I disagree with that comment, sorry. Um, but, um, for us to say we know what the, uh, rest of the representative people would say is hard to say.
And that lies back to the fact that the union, and that is in the recording, the union came to it thinking that we meant that they were gonna, that we just didn't want to negotiate these, so they're gonna stay the same. They were not understanding that us as a council wanted a completely new contract. Whether that's depending on or not, but that's the fact of how they understood it. There was a community there.
Thank you, did you have something to add?
Well, I was just gonna add to that statement and say, you know, our very first meeting was to talk about ground rules. And you probably watched that.
I did.
In which we explained the provisions of council and what council agreed that they wanted in the contract, which was at-will, the holidays to match other city employees, and a forty-hour work week. That was meeting number one.
Just make a motion.
Sure.
Figure out where we're going from here, okay. Uh, make a motion to continue negotiations with Ask Me, Local eleven twenty-four. Um, and reset our previous decision.
The date as well. A date?
A date. Uh, oh, sorry, would you say?
Six twenty-five.
Oh, uh, death, and having the, the negotiations completed and contract all ready to go by, uh, eight, eight.
Six twenty-five.
April twenty-five, six twenty-five. Oh, June twenty-five, June twenty-five, right.
Sure.
Twenty twenty-five.
That's three weeks.
Yeah. Um, and then to open up, uh, negotiation or open up conversations on grievances, overtime, and holiday pay.
Okay.
Alex, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
We have already said that is not negotiable, correct?
So that's why I'm bringing you back, because we said we can talk about whether we want to talk about it again.
We can, but.
But you can also vote no.
Okay, so.
Let me, let me read the motion back as I understand it. The motion is to continue with the negotiations with Ask Me, Local eleven twenty-four through June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, and to reevaluate the progress of the negotiations, if not completed by this. They included in that motion was to, uh, put back on the table grievances, overtime, and holiday pay.
Yes. And, and part of the, um, part of the reason for that for me is some of these I did not understand when I first made that decision. You guys might feel differently, but for me, I did not fully understand it. It seems like there wasn't a full understanding for what, how they read the, the language. And as far as we understand language, so I would like to have one more chance for that language to get cleaned up. But otherwise, if we go in saying you can't even look at these, we're not gonna be able to clean up that language. And I was, I was, I got a second, so I got to say why I made that motion that way. All right.
For further discussion? Uh, Jennifer, please.
I just wanted, for clarification on opening up, you said opening up conversations on grievances, overtime, and holiday. Can you clarify what you mean by opening up? Because grievances isn't an issue that locked out, as far as I'm aware. And then the overtime and the holiday.
Is it a forty-hour work week?
There's other, there's other compensatory times that fall under that as, as far as council discussions. So, um, I just, just clarification on, on what the intent is because as far as I know, city staff, um, and the city negotiating team, we are not aware of what document you keep referring to.
Oh, it's just a snippet, basically, of the, of the actual union contract.
Well, again, so we don't know what those points are, so if you're making decisions on that, you can clarify so that we have our guidance.
Well, I probably shouldn't have said grievances, that tried to be the forty-hour. Is the overtime and the forty-hour different? Are those two different columns? Wish I had. This is just a snippet, we have a full. They're two different things. So I guess instead of grievances, I should have said forty hours were overtime and holiday pay. Does that make sense, Jennifer?
So, so those provisions that were previously, um, directed by the council, the, those three items from the prior vote, looks like you have four there.
Well, that one's the at-will. Oh, I see, okay.
So the other three items that the council previously directed were off the table would be put back on the table for negotiations?
Correct.
Um, does the second from her, um, does, and then this?
Sure.
Would you please repeat them back to us? Repeat them.
Oh, my, that's, don't hold this paper, it's not real.
Okay, uh, does counsel have, uh, any questions about the motion on what you're voting on? Is that, Counselor Wright?
Yeah, uh, so this is, uh, rescinding the limits regarding OT, OT pay without forty hours work and holiday overtime rates.
Yeah.
Those two pieces.
Forty-hour work week, overtime, that's calculated, and then holiday pay.
Oh, and then holiday pay is one of them, okay.
Jennifer, are we in agreement?
I understand what that means, I'm writing it down.
Yeah, sorry. I was a little messy.
Okay, does counsel understand the motion? Okay, for further discussion? Okay, Clerk Rocky?
Counselor President Klieber.
Aye.
Counselor Forsman.
Aye.
Counselor Klein.
Nay.
Counselor Wright.
Nay.
Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Aye.
Counselor Schroder.
Aye.
Take motion carries. Order two. Brian and Chris and Pat, do you have any questions on the motion before we? Make a call. Be here tonight.
Good. There, I got, I got, if you're sure, if there, if you want to read.
Uh, if I could, I'm assuming this was not recorded. Well, the reason I was asking, if not, I would request copies of the minutes because my notes, I'm trying to keep up with everything and go to where, yeah, to where we can take it to the group of clarity.
Um, and just for clarification on one.
Hold on, Counselor.
Oh, I'm sorry, man.
Okay, the meeting is being recorded. So you can get a copy of that for your records. All right, so motion carries, and if everyone understands that, Counselor Forsman.
I was just gonna say, uh, just to, for you, when you guys go in to bring to your union, um, the at-will was, stayed at standard, so that was, we didn't, the council didn't change, changing that will for a cost.
Okay, we're gonna move to room number five on to finish the note business. A city council comments, comments shall not be related tonight. And clearly, for the city council tonight, and may come for the city council in the foreseeable future, shall be limited. Comments not discussed.
Okay.
Counselor Forsman.
Uh, I, I wanna thank everyone in this room. Um, obviously, when people are talking about your pay, your livelihood, your work, it can be really hard to keep your emotions in check. And you all were very great and professional, um, and expressed yourselves well. Nikki and our legal team, same thing, trying to just keep the facts without emotion and depersonalize. Uh, so I just wanna commend you guys. Uh, sometimes government can be not so civil. Um, and so that was a very positive negotiation. Thank you for being here and sort of being positive and respectful.
You.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further counsel comments? Your comments, I'm hungry.
I should, was that my stomach growing? I would like.
It's her motion, adjourned. So move. It's been moved by Counselor President Klieber. Second, and by Counselor Schroder to adjourn, those in favor, please signify by pressing a aye.
Aye.
Always, and sign to the signature, and thank you.